All right, we'll go ahead and call to order our planning commission meeting for the live 15th at 6:31. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in one nation, under God, indivisible, with the review of justice. Right. I think it's been a good habit of roll call.
Mr. Wolfius?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
Mr. Journey?
Present.
Commissioner Melcher?
Here.
And Commissioner Lohman?
Here.
Both Commissioner Corn and Commissioner Stevens sent me an email letting me know they weren't going to be here.
So now we have the opportunity for public comment in regards to anything that is not on our budget for the evening. Anybody have anything that they'd like to bring before the meeting? Time to do it. All right, as there are none, we will move on to reviewing the minutes. We'll ask. If you have any corrections or question?
I would move that we approve the minutes of May 3rd.
Do you want to include in that?
The next.
June 7th.
I wondered if you maybe wouldn't want to do them separately, but that's okay. And the minutes of June 7th. Was written.
Daniel, second that.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, you're doing, you're approving both at once?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, that. Have a motion and a second for Andrew for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Journey?
Yes.
Commissioner Lohman?
Yes.
Commissioner Melcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Wolfius?
Yes.
And Commissioner Parker?
Yes. All right. Moving right along. First, order of business, application ZMA 2102. We will open the public hearing at 6:34. The applicant is proposing to change the zoning map in the area consisting of approximately 29,335 square feet located at 1411 Eighteenth Avenue and 1355 Nineteenth Avenue. Sweet Home Oregon 97386. Sweet Home zoning map is proposed to change from the industrial M zone to the highly commercial C2 zone. But those change would bring the zoning designation into conformity with the property's existing comprehensive plan map designation. Planning Commission will hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to city council. City council will hold a public hearing to decide on this application. Application ZMA 21-02 being filed simultaneously with application PLA 2113, PLA 2114, and PLA 2115. Applications PLA 2113, 2114, and 2115 are pending approval of application ZMA 2101. So. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which is a person to use to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties the opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. Do any of our commissioners have any personal bias in regard to this application?
No.
None.
No.
Any conflicts of interest?
Nope.
No.
Any extrate information?
No.
No.
All right, so go ahead and go for a staff report.
As stated by Chairman Parker, the applicant is proposing to change the zoning map in an area consisting of approximately 29,335 square feet, 0.67 acres located at 1411 Eighteenth Avenue and 1355 Nineteenth Avenue, Sweet Home Oregon 97386. Map 13S01E32DB, tax lots 3701, 400, and 1100. The Sweet Home zoning map is proposed to change from the commercial highway C2 zone and industrial M zone to the light industrial zone. The proposed zone change would bring the zoning designation into conformity with the property's existing comprehensive plan map designation. The planning commission will hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the city council, and the city council will hold a public hearing and decide on this application. Application ZMA 21-02 is being filed simultaneously with applications PLA 2113, PLA 2114, and PLA 2115. Applications PLA 2113, PLA 2114, and PLA 2115 are pending the approval of application ZMA 21-01. The property line adjustment applications were approved pending the ZMA 21-02 on July 6, 2021. Based on the review of the FEMA FUD plane panel dated September 29, 2010, the subject property is not in the 100-year floodplain. The subject property does not show wetlands and waterways on the property that are depicted on the Sweet Home Local Wetlands Inventory and National Wetland Inventory map. Subject property has frontage along 18th Avenue and 19th Avenue. And the subject property has access to city water and sewer services. In Section 3A, an amendment to the official zoning or comprehensive plan map may be authorized provided that the proposal satisfied all relevant requirements of this title and also provided that the applicant demonstrates under the following. And then, based on the Lynn County's 2018 aerial photograph, the area is surrounded by highway, commercial, and industrial lots. There is no development plan with the zone map amendment application. Based on the findings above, the proposed zoning plan designation would be consistent with the Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan, so the application does comply. Staff finds that the proposed zoning map amendment would be orderly and timely, be consistent with the pattern of development in the area, and based on the 2018 Lynn County aerial photograph, staff finds that the subject property is surrounded by highway, commercial, and industrial lots, and the application complies with the criteria. Water and sanitary sewer services are available in 18th Avenue and 19th Avenue. The subject property has frontage along 18th Avenue and 19th Avenue, and the applicant has not proposed development with the zone map amendment application. So the application complies. The proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan map was consistent with Oregon statewide planning goals. The applicant is not proposing an amendment to the comprehensive plan map. And if the amendment to the functional plan is acknowledged comprehensive plan or land use regulation, including a zoning map, would significantly affect an existing or planned transportation facility, then the local government must put in place measures as provided in Section 2 of the rules unless the amendment is allowed under Section 3, 9, or 10 of this rule. The subject property has existed frontage along 18th and 19th Avenue, and that is a correction from what is stated in your staff report. The applicant has proposed a change in zoning from commercial highway C2 zone and industrial M zone to light industrial zone. The proposed use would be consistent with the comprehensive plan map designation. Based on these findings, staff concludes that the proposed zone change would not significantly affect the existing transportation infrastructure in the neighborhood and is consistent with the Sweet Home Transportation System Plan. Based on the findings listed in Section 3 of this report, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve this application. Since the request is for a zone change, staff has not recommended any conditions of approval. Enacting on a zone change application, the planning commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either recommend that the city council approve or deny the application. The recommendation should be based on the applicable review and design criteria. The city council will hold a public hearing and decide on this application. Motion after the public hearing and after opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the planning commission's options include the following. One, move to recommend the city council approve application ZMA 21-02, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report. Two, move to recommend that the city council deny application ZMA 21-02, and you must specify reasons. Three, move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain, specify reasons, or four, other.
All right. Anybody on the commission have any questions?
So it looks like this would actually clear up an inconsistency between the comp plan and the zoning maps.
Correct.
Another question first at this time, if we have our applicant. Audience, I'd like to come on up. Once you have a seat, we can just state your name and address for the record.
Already turned it on.
Michael Grove. Did it go? All right.
There is.
Michael Grove, 1325 Eighteenth Avenue, Sweet Home, Oregon.
And purpose of your application?
Yeah, absolutely. So the zone change is to complete a scale. It'll be a secondary scale, so ideally, that area is our transfer station. We're looking to free up the flow of traffic, getting vehicles in and out quicker, hopefully not backing traffic out on the 18th anymore.
That's a calm.
Absolutely.
If there are. All right. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for our applicant at this time?
Just out of curiosity, what's in that property right now? Is it just vacant or has it been used?
Yeah, so if you take a look at the map, that building that is shown on the site map there or on the Google Maps, we've actually, we've actually torn down that, so it's essentially all just open area right now. And there's really nothing to either side of it.
The most of the area concerned is where the semis are backed in for loading from the top. And this is all kind of parking now, well, not parking.
Thank you.
Commissioners, just to let you know, in order for them to do what they want to do, they had to do a property line adjustment, but in order to do a property line adjustment, they had to do zone map. And so they couldn't move lines until they did that, and so that's what prompted this, which is why they had to do the zone map amendment.
Can you access the property down by?
You can, that is actually where customers exit from the transfer station, and our route trucks will enter to dump any of their garbage through 19th.
And that's current practice?
Yes.
All right. Got all our questions for our applicant? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Leave us on.
Yeah. All right, if anybody in our audience that would like to speak in favor of this application, this would be the time to come forward. All right, any opposition, testimony in opposition to the applicant? Any neutral testimony, not in favor or against, just want to make that. And you know? No? All right, so at this time, we will close the public hearing for a discussion amongst the commission at 6:45. Any questions? Seems pretty straightforward. Kind of clarifying and then kind of in our current zoning.
Looks like just a procedural necessity.
I think that's exactly. Anybody have any questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion. Based on the findings listed in Section 3 of this report. Sorry. In that. We don't have any preliminary. Language, Angela, we just go right to the motions. We move to recommend that the city council approve application ZMA 21-02, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Angela, for a roll call vote.
Me.
Christian Melcher?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfius?
Yes.
Yes.
Christian Journey?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. All right, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next at the business is the continuation of application SD 21-01. We will open the public hearing at 6:47. The applicant is requesting to subdivide an approximate 6.5 acre property into 22 lots ranging from approximately 8,196 square feet to approximately 15,764 square feet. Those subdivisions, average lot size, and approximately 11,980 square feet. Approximately 8,196 square feet shall be reserved for a stormwater prevention area. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward that criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties the opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. So do any of our commissioners have any personal bias in regards to this application? To this application?
No.
No.
Any conflicts of interest?
No.
Any extrate information?
No.
All right, I think most of our staff report is just.
There is, so the revised site plans show 21 lots ranging from 8,196 square feet to 15,764 square feet on option C and 8,196 square feet to 10,874 square feet on option D. So those are the changes. And our applicant, well, one part of our applicant is running late. He did let me know that, so. I know there's one half here.
What is the difference between the two?
The cul-de-sac versus the driveways.
Yeah. You notice on the screen, I'm flipping between the two of them. Technology.
It's.
Will they all be accessed from that cul-de-sac? Or will the ones abutting foothills access from foothills?
So the ones to the north will, but will access from foothills, and then the ones from the south each have the cul-de-sacs.
Okay.
Lot 21, 18, for instance, would access.
They come down the cul-de-sac?
Well, I think that, I think that's still yet to be determined.
I see what you're saying.
If you would like to consider, if one of these, if this is the option that's chosen, it's kind of open right now where they would access.
And stop.
But you. True, but if you wished, you could put that in the condition of approval as well. I'm not sure which is better.
Do you think about how they're going to cite the homes on those front lots?
No, and it's. So, yeah, it's up to the applicant and kind of how it plays. What they did is they gave you a couple of options. You guys requested a couple of options, lots time to choose from, to show some different scenarios, and so that's what, this is what they came up with. The engineer is here, and I know the applicant will be here shortly, so if you have questions.
I personally would gladly see extra information. To be on.
I guess the question for me is. What we were just talking about, about the access to foothills from the northerly properties? Because then you potentially have, what? Six more driveways, including the. If you go to the other one. Yeah. And you've got six more driveways plus the access to.
Oh, yeah. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so that's a question mark.
You're speaking, there'd just be the access, there'd be the driveway for say lot 21 facing foothills and then that.
Yeah.
And that the additional roadway would be like a whole bunch of little curb cut.
Yeah, like.
Well, they're not taking curbs, I guess.
One thing to keep in mind with that also is that the fire district, I'm not sure when the right point to bring this up. The feedback we've gotten from the fire district is that with this 30, 30-foot curb-to-curb width of the road, they are recommending that there be parking on only one side.
Right.
So if there's no parking on one side, it makes it a little easier to have more driveways. But that's something to consider how that would impact.
So then the properties on the north that face south onto foothills actually carry the brunt of the park. The ex, yeah.
Depending on which side you say is the right, I would, it makes sense to me at least that the north side would be where you would have the, if you have only parking on one side, you probably have it on the north.
Side.
But if these, if these lots all access off of the shared driveway, then you only have three points of entry along the south side, in which case that may be the right side for parking. Because otherwise, you have a driveway every, on each one of these, it can't be blocked.
Right.
Yeah, and I mean, I, it can, it can be oriented in one or possibly two.
And still, in that regard, the circular cul-de-sac is a little bit more.
Neighborhoodly.
Oh, absolutely.
One.
Practical, anyway.
And not flaggy.
In speaking with A. Behringer, also, he commented on this, the turn radius.
Yeah.
Right here is, I believe in the plan, it says it's a 16-foot turn radius.
Oh.
And that's not sufficient, they need, they need more, more space to turn into that cul-de-sac. Whereas in the other plan, because this is a shared, a shared access even, it's not an actual road, and it's understood that the, that the fire trucks would not necessarily be going down that road, that that's 116 feet or so that they'd be stretching hose. Which, within their regulations, they, they require at least, it, it would have to be over 150 feet for that to be a problem.
So if you're going by safety, then this would be the option.
I don't, I don't know, I'm not sure, I don't feel qualified to say whether one is more safe than the other.
Well, from the fire standpoint, I'm saying, because they can't make that turn into.
In this, in this example, the fire truck would stay on.
The street.
The street, and the hoses would be stretched down this way.
Couldn't it on the other too?
And theoretically, they could, but because this is an actual street, it puts it in a different category when it comes to the requirements. And so the fire district would ask here that it be at least a 28-foot turn radius on the inside and with a 40,
right, right.
48 feet on the outside turn radius.
So they'd have to cut down on the lot size to make more.
It would be interesting to see what that tangent would look like. Increasing, increasing the radius, how much to.
Actually, Blair, this map being a, something of a draft plat layout, these are the property line radiuses. And seemingly, it's about a nine or almost a 10-foot distance out to the foothills drive curb with a five-foot sidewalk and a three-and-a-half to four-foot planter strip and a curb. That radius, which is 16 feet at the property line, is actually a 26-foot radius at the curb phase. So.
It's actually not far off.
It's not far off. Oh. Now, these, these are the property lines. Outside this line would be the remainder of the sidewalks, a gap, a planter, curb line, et cetera. So the radius is, would be wide.
Okay.
wider.
Yeah, I like the cul-de-sac better than the other one, only because in emergency, I think the people in the cul-de-sac would get service quicker than the one that's sheer driveway because of the long distance. You know, for ambulances, a lot quicker right there, the cul-de-sac, very long driveway. If I was a person buying a property, you know, I would, I probably would go with the cul-de-sac, only thinking I would get faster emergency service.
I believe our applicant is ready.
All right, so at this time, we would like to invite our applicants to come forward.
Oh, yeah, all right. Just for.
Yeah.
I'm just.
Yeah, once you have a seat, if you guys.
Yeah, sorry, Bob. I had an emergency to deal with.
Just state your name and address for the record.
So it's Sabley Colugan, 155 Cherry Street, Woodburn, Oregon. 97071.
And I'm Corby Boatwright, Boatwright Engineering Salem.
All right, so just for the record, if you guys could just briefly go over your application and the purpose of it.
So basically, what the purpose of it is to subdivide and develop the bare land that we have on foothills right now. And just to put up, try to put up as many lots as we can comfortably. And obviously, we've been going back and forth with our design, see what's doable with you guys and how your standards are.
All right. I'll, I'll say from my standpoint, I, I'm really thankful that you guys are willing to work with us and come up with different solutions to this, not really a problem, but situation. Thank you for giving us a couple of options to look at.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody on the commission have any question? If you'd like to add?
Can you talk a little bit your interests in both of these options, whether good or bad features of either or both?
So the, which one, I'm going to try to see if I can. So this is, which option is this one?
This is the one we're proposing, versus the cul-de-sac.
Okay, so this one, this one that we're looking at with the dead end stops?
That option C.
Is that option?
Yeah.
That one right there?
Yeah.
So option C then. So Corb, well, we, we're proposing to do that one because according to Corby, doing a cul-de-sac with the slope being on the southern, southern, what, western side there, there's too much slope and a cul-de-sac won't work, so how we've been talking back and forth with these, with these meetings is since we are able to do this, doing a dead-end stop roadway, and we have that space and especially for fire and medical and the wits, so this is where we're coming at. This is, this is where we're at right now. So a cul-de-sac necessarily can't really work according to ODOT or.
It's going to be a lot more cut.
A lot more cut? So it's just going to be a lot more cut to deal with, a lot more grade to deal with, to get it right.
So one of our questions was then about the placement of the driveway for the front lots, in other words, the northern lots of the two that are stacked.
For which, which, which lots are you talking about?
So on the south, foothills.
So.
Like lot 21, 18, 17, 14.
So are you, can I go up and?
So are you guys talking about? Are you guys asking about where we're gonna do the driveway?
Yeah.
We were thinking about matching these lots right here and having the driveway come through here, come from the road. So, and then obviously these, since we have all this, we would have the, we have the house place this way, we would have that. Right way going like this.
Yeah.
Same thing right here and something like that.
You know.
That's what we're. That's the original plan, that was the original plan.
While you're there. The driveway looks like it intrudes into the lots. Is, is there a reason for that, or why doesn't it just?
Which one, which ones are?
Oh, just the dotted line.
Oh, yeah, the dotted line.
This dotted one?
Yeah, why, why don't you end the driveway up there at the other property line, right, where, go up, take it from, no, come on down.
That's an easement for both sides to use that area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Obviously, this right here is just a shared drain, even, even, so these two lots would share one, one side. These two lots would share their one, one side, and then these two lots would share, share drain it as well. So it doesn't overload the system, there's too much runoff. And then obviously you have, right here, we have the future water easement that you guys are planning to do. And then also this is all just drainage and stuff, maybe drainage easements.
And I, I see what you're saying with the topograph where you included. Where lot twenty had significant slope. It was nineteen, it's a little.
Yeah, and let's, it's, it's from twenty to six, lot twenty, nineteen, and is that sixteen? Yeah, sixteen, so they all have significant slope and we have too much cut to. To, to make it comfortable for a bulb cul-de-sac. Yeah, to do it comfortably and it's just, it's too much. So that's what we're proposing, is just having a dead-end stop and then we're able to, once, if we are able to build the houses back in those two. Those three lots, then we can actually grade the, the lot or grade the house to the lot comfortably and do the driveway. From there. And if we, if we do this option with the, what is this, the option C? Well, I'm assuming we would have to pave the, pave those roads and do curves on each side? For option C.
For option C, that, that would require, Joe, you can probably speak to that better than I can.
So we would have to pave the roads right here and do curves? And sidewalks or just, just?
I believe just.
You'd have to do the.
Yep, sorry, thank. Being as how that is private, even with an easement. It would be just the, the hard surface approach twenty feet off of the foothills drive. And the rest of the driveway up the hill would be gravel. At a minimum, now, the.
Certainly, they, they can pave more.
They can certainly pave more, absolutely.
Curves and sidewalks wouldn't be necessary.
So, at these points here, we would have to do like an approach.
Yeah, you'd have to do an approach and a partial paved or concrete driveway apron. Beyond that, that's the discretion of the owners.
But as I'm understanding it, they would not be required to have sidewalks.
No.
Correct.
Or curves.
And that makes sense.
I mean, we're already putting a lot of drainage lines in, in there to mitigate any overflow of runoff, so.
On, on a personal note, I think I'd like to see asphalt all the way to the back, just because that area is notorious. Not required, but.
You might add to that, asphalt all the way into the garage.
Some people prefer asphalt all the way to the garage, I've seen that done.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, we, we've got streets in town that are paved, that are pretty much just gravel.
What's that?
Will these lots be fenced?
Yeah, to a point, I mean, wherever we can, because we still need to have view, especially from. Lot twenty, like all the back lots and we, when whoever's gonna be driving up and down that road. Lot twenty-one, eighteen, on all that, along foothills, we can't, we have to be like, what, twenty feet away from the road? And we can't have six-foot fence, can't have any fencing for visibility, so it'll be fenced partially. Yeah, so it'll be fenced partially.
Okay, but on back.
Back.
The drive.
Yeah, it's.
Lots, the, the ones that are about the foothills.
Yeah, we would fence it as much as we can, or, you know, if we pre-sell these ones, it can be up to the homeowners. A lot of lots sometimes don't have fencing, some, some prefer not having fencing, some people do, so. I don't know, you guys' standards, standards on fencing, I don't know if it's required to do fencing.
It's not required.
No.
But I usually do it anyways whenever I build houses, so.
Especially with a flag lot, it's usually.
I would say for safety too, that's someone's yard.
Definitely, yeah.
Commissioners have any more questions for our applicant?
Commissioner, Chairman?
Yes.
One thing that you may want to address i- is the fire district's comments about parking. Limited to one side and whether that causes the issue.
Have you guys gotten that information from the fire department that's recommended?
I didn't get anything in my email, so.
We just received.
Fire, fire chief had a concern based on the width of the road of foothills since we're going down in size from the existing area. That we limit the parking to one side of foothills and not go.
Which side would you guys prefer?
Well, I think that would be, that would kind of come down to your, your placement of the homes and the driveways. The northern lots, one through nine. I, I would assume would probably driveways would match each other, kind of book, book match each other.
Mirror, we would have my houses mirrored through, basically.
Kind of be on the, on a shared lot line and not just all on the left or the right. So, I guess we'd have to look at a. And that be determined in a later day, does that need to be done?
Oh, i- it's, I, I'm not sure that it has to be determined tonight, I mean, you can basically include in the conditions of approval that. Parking be limited to one side and it wouldn't necessarily, I'm not sure that it would have to be specified which side, would it, Joe?
Would it make sense, but on this side?
It actually, it actually would be better to designate one side versus the other at this point with a condition. So, the actual implementation would be a council resolution and an RCA, and they would make it happen.
One thing to consider is that. With option C here. If those front lots. Were to utilize the shared access easement. It would cut down on the number of driveways going into the foothills on the south side. And you could maximize the amount of on-street parking on that single side.
On the south side.
On the south side of foothill, but that would require, in order for that to be worth it, it seems to me that you would have to have those. Those front lots, twenty-one, eighteen, seventeen, fourteen, thirteen, and ten, utilizing the shared driveway. And that would, that would increase your parking available on-street parking, but that again, depends on the design of the.
Reason here for width wise, like from.
And the design of the homes is not part of our criteria.
No, true, but, but if, if you had that criteria, and they access it, then it would essentially force. Okay, driveway from that side.
So how, how big is it right here?
But then they would, the houses wouldn't necessarily.
So what is this line?
Street, which is. Said in the past that we.
That makes sense. That goes to retain.
Then it's a matter of accessing from the garage to the front door of the house, which would be facing.
How much room do we have?
There, there's certainly ways to combine that with the design, but I, I think the applicant should probably weigh in on that.
So, uh, we, so, eh, are we talking about the parking still?
Correct.
Yes, so we, we, well. Um, we're, we're thinking, or at least an idea is go back to original width and just add six feet of access. To of our original road, instead of, yeah, instead of like having the thirty-foot curb to curb, which is pretty tight. And just add extra six feet and like especially. Right, right at the corner of, was it foothills and twenty-third? We have the planter strip and the sidewalk, we could just run the sidewalk straight, is that the planter strip right there? So we just eliminate the planter strip and just have a straight sidewalk and just. Widen the road a little bit, six feet.
Meaning that foothill would, would be the same width as it is existing? No, existing is forty-four now, we're making it thirty-six. Thirty-six.
From a thirty.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so that's six feet for cars to comfortably get through. Which is significantly better than twenty-third and the other one that's over here somewhere.
And then the sidewalks would go back on a sidewalk easement with the utilities like you have on the other subdivision. That way you could have parking on both sides.
Joe, would that be adequate?
One of the comp, one of the complications of having the sidewalks on private property in an easement, where the utility easements are. Is that at those locations, particularly on the north side of the street. Where it's going to be required to have access, because that's the only place you can. That setback is going to need to be deeper than the standard, because if your sidewalk. Is on the private property, you cannot park over the sidewalk if you don't fit your car inside the garage. I would say probably eight to nine out of ten people don't put cars in driveways anymore, that's a guess, but. If you have a twenty-foot or an eighteen-foot car, you're going to need. That extra distance between the garage. And the property line to accommodate the sidewalk and the parked vehicle, because you cannot park over a sidewalk. That doesn't mean that the twenty-foot setback needs to change for the building structure, but it will need to be modified. For the garage portion of the structure.
Basically, we'd go from a twenty-foot setback to garage, George, to thirty. Can't park inside.
Correct. Well, we're, the, where we're looking right now, we are only gonna eliminate three feet, so. So right now, we're at, you know, what is it, one-ten on lot three, we eliminate three feet and we just. Instead of going twenty feet from property line for regular garage setback, we go twenty-five instead of actually thirty, that could. That will limit, that will actually limit, limit me, because, you know, in order to fit a comfortable, nice, single-story house, I need the length, so.
So a condition would be that garages are set back twenty-five feet from the front property line?
So we'd at least have a little bit more width to play around right there, so we have more width for parking on the street.
But the home is still twenty foot.
Yeah.
Garage would just be recessed back by the, which would look nice.
Yeah, it's twelve.
I think it depends on the, the style of the home, but you're talking minimums, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So instead of going extreme of thirty, we would have twenty-five feet from property line, which we still should have enough room. For a car to fit comfortably in their driveway and not go over sidewalk. So we technically, we would need twenty-three, but it's nice to have lesser, plus two, a couple of feet and keep it simple. So that's an idea.
Okay. So language for a condition. On lots where sidewalks are encroached on the property, those. Garage setbacks would be twenty-five feet, does that?
Yes, I think that would be reasonable.
Okay.
And that would only apply for the northern lots, or would you guys want to do it on also?
Any lot that.
Where you have the sidewalk.
So that's what would be on these both sides. It would just be these, yeah, so.
Both sides.
In both sides.
So street width is now proposed to be thirty-six feet.
Yes.
We have it at thirty, so if you want to go to thirty-six, that's.
With sidewalks then encroached on the property.
Well, I mean, if we're, if we're doing parking on both sides, then obviously thirty is too, too narrow. And if we're, if you guys are okay with us doing a thirty, then we'll just have to post signs saying no parking on one side. And if it was up to me, I would just have parking on the northern lots. But if you guys are sticking to have parking on both sides, then we would have to do a condition of twenty-five feet for the. Garages and from the property line, move the sidewalk a little bit with the planter strip and then. And just kind of widen the road, six feet, the, the actual road curb to curb. And have thirty-six feet, so.
What's ideal for the city?
Well, and, and he's saying that, anything that fits and works and doesn't cause a problem is ideal. For a point of comparison though, around the corner at Twenty-Eighth Avenue. That is a thirty-six foot wide curb to curb with curb side sidewalks, no planter strips. So if you're familiar with that particular street, that's what that curb to curb looks like.
I think from, just from a, a. A traffic and, and circulation aspect, to have. A one street that is. Only parking on one side, whereas all the streets that are leading up to it are parking on both sides, will likely generate some confusion among. Residents and, and enforcement issue, I mean, obviously you'd have signs and so forth, but it just seems to me that. When it comes to lifestyles, it would probably be easier to have parking on both sides of the street.
Not officially, but the city seems to be in favor of a wider street.
I think so.
Yeah, but we also have to think about, uh, when for the, at the southern lots, twenty to the eleven. Especially if people are driving out, can't really, I mean, you have to be certain feet away from that corner to drive out comfortably. Especially for medical and emergency services too, so you can't have people park right there.
And I think a lot of that would come into code and.
Yeah, and then we would only technically, we would only technically have maybe. So if we have the driveway right by the actual, the other driveways, so we'd have maybe one, like maybe five extra parking spots. Would we really, would you guys really want to? Limit the space more for vehicles and cause more traffic, especially, especially this road being tight as it is, going from foothills to. From the original foothills to foothills to twenty-third, twenty-third is already tight as it is. So. If, you know, if it was me, I would do the parking on one side, and then we have space to have traffic flow comfortably and people drive out of their driveways. Especially the back lots. That's my opinion.
Which lots would sell better, what, what are people looking for?
Usually, I mean, if you're looking at Woodburn, people are going to park in front of the houses regardless. But in my, in my, like, past experience, if you have no parking signs, nobody parks on that side, and that's it. I mean, it's just how it is, and also, this is technically private driveways. Somebody gets, if someone goes through and snags a vehicle, it's not the person snagging the vehicle's fault, it's gonna be the person parking there, so. So we don't, we're. You know, just, I, I feel like we're gonna have a catch-twenty-two at that point, having more parking and just having more traffic and. Actually, less visibility for people actually driving out from their, from their private driveways to the actual foothills. So we need more visibility too, and I don't know if we can actually put driveways right next to this driveway, because people are gonna park there. And we can't have fence there for visibility too, so we have to be mindful of that as well. So we're. It's either we have parking on one side, or we have parking on both sides, widen the road and have less visibility. Or have parking on one side and have a little bit better visibility for people to drive out, especially from their long driveway. So.
Yeah, I guess at this point, it's, it's. Yeah, like you're saying, six of one, half dozen of the other, where, where we get the visibility, how many parking spots do we gain by going with a wider road? And allowing more on-street parking that create five spaces.
It looks like we're only gonna have maybe one, two, or like five, five, maybe six, you pay, maybe squeeze a six car. In all reality, how many vehicles do people have in Sweet Home, per, per house? So.
I mean, we could, we could speculate on a lot of things.
No, yeah, that's. No, yeah, that's true, but also you have to think about visibility and.
Right, and that's, that's, that'll come down to city code and compliance with curb, curb painting distance. Standard. Traffic, traffic.
With these larger lot sizes, do we have the ability to have additional onsite parking? Maybe in front of the garage instead of the two in front of the garage, maybe add another, a third on a.
This.
I think a lot of that will come down to, to the design and placement of the house and that unfortunately isn't.
These are good sized lots.
They, they are good sized lots and it's going to be up to, like if I'm, well, I'm obviously going to be building these houses, I only do the one driveway. In front of the garage and that's it. And if buyer comes in, they're like, hey, I want an RV parking space and it's going to have, I have to go through you guys, I have to go to Public Works, make sure that's okay. And if we're, if we have enough room to do that, additional parking.
Based on permit application, not so much something that would have. Yeah.
So. Yeah, but you still have to. Uh, it's just more hoops that we have to jump through.
Well, yes and no. I mean, a lot of it would be.
I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to like complain the time, I'm just trying to explain. From my, what, what I had to deal with in the past and it'll doors, well, especially Salem, uh, you guys are different, completely different from Salem, but. I know in Salem, they do the twenty feet and twenty feet only. And um, my brother-in-law, he did his driveway, he did twenty and he had another like ten, fifteen feet to the property line. And he did just, he just paved everything and the city came and flagged them even though he asked if that was okay. And they're like, no, you can't do this, you can do the twenty and then you can branch off. And um, I'm not sure if he, what you guys are. Are you guys?
When the teenagers start driving, then we've got.
And it's going to be, it's going to be. Also. Yeah, and also it's kind of comes to the point where. Technically, I can't foresee that as well. And it would be the, it would have to be the homeowner thinking of. Hey, we need to pave some more. And also we could always plan of having, since we have what the thirteen feet um. Setbacks minimum, we could always have the house more on the five feet on one side and have more space on the one side over there. So if we have either ten or eight feet minimum, or, or we have eight feet minimum, but. If we have ten feet on one side, there's more than enough space for somebody to come through later and be like, they want to pave this section too, so.
Unrelated to this, it would go over Mr. Have you not saying that placement of the house with future thinking of an RV pad would be.
That's. Yeah, that's what, that's, that's what we were thinking of doing. We're thinking about putting generator plugs into the house and actually going above and beyond. For, for the subdivision, so.
All right, so going back directly to what we've got here in front of us, um. Do any of the commissioners have any further questions for applicant regards to the layout? Of what we have, we have two options to look at.
Before we go too far, Blair did mention a shared driveway. And did we just totally bypass that?
No, that's, that's option C.
I think he was, are you referring to having the front lots go onto the shared driveway?
Access the shared driveway.
Well, instead of having two driveways, twenty five feet each. You'd have a shared driveway.
No, 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 that's not what I was suggesting.
No.
Okay. No. It would still be the same size. What I was suggesting was that if lots, if those front lots accessed off of that shared driveway. Then that's fewer driveways on foothills and theoretically more parking space on the street.
That's true. That's true.
And that's.
Definitely something.
That's one way to, i- if, if that's something that the applicant can do with your house design, I, I don't know whether that makes it harder or not. It was just an idea that might. Maximize the parking if you did the single side parking.
So what, going into the shared driveway is that if it's going to be, is, so technically this would be shared drive, right, right?
So, yeah, these are, are shared private access easement, essentially instead of having it just among those two back lots, you would be including the two front lots on that shared.
I thought that wasn't allowed last time we talked. Okay, so I may, I may have.
So, but it does mean that your house design would have those driveways coming from the.
We could do that. There, it doesn't, we could always mirror the house to have the driveway in the back. And uh. But a lot of the times you gotta ask, so think, I have to think ahead to backyard cell, so. I have to think about that as well. And if they, especially if these are going to be first time home buyers, a lot of first time home buyers want backyards. And they'd rather have an RV pad in the front, the driveway in the front. So.
All right. You have a question? All right, oh, so for, for now, if you guys want to take a seat, great.
Great.
All right, so do we have anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of our application that may have before us right now? Nobody wishes to speak in favor? Those wishing to speak in opposition of this application? Well, I'm gonna end up all in rapid, all within the past two weeks. All right, once you had a seat, find and state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name's Ron Walker. The address is twenty six thirty one foothills drive. First off, I'd like to say that I appreciate the effort that the commission and the staff has done here. I've seen a lot of improvement since day one. And I think we're all making a step in the right direction. Lot of things going up here right now as far as the street widths and stuff that we've been discussing, you've been discussing. I have one silly question regarding planter strips. Are, are we required to have a planter strip or can we eliminate a planter strip and gain some width that way? Personally, I have a planter strip and I don't like it. Okay.
Yes, yeah. For local, local streets in the subdivision, yes, a planter strip is required, three foot minimum.
Okay, I could have swore you said twenty eighth didn't have one, but I think it did.
Yes, twenty eighth doesn't have it on red.
Right, twenty eighth does not have it.
So that the current standard is that they are required, twenty eighth, got in without them.
Yes.
Was that before the standard was made or was that because it was a client development?
I believe it was, no, it was standard, but it was, twenty eighth was made before that standard. In two thousand and four.
Okay, and twenty seventh came after.
Yes, twenty seventh came after.
Okay, well, that kind of sort of answers that, but that was just kind of something that um. Passed through my mind that might gain us some space that all of us are kind of looking for. Um, yeah. I'm starting to become more in favor of where we're going with this. So at some point in time here, I'm going to say, okay, I'm going to sit on the four side of things, uh, looking at the two options. Uh, it appears that the street widths are the same in both of those options, C and D.
Yeah.
Okay, and option C, we are still dealing with the shared driveway. Where you, we, we would have agreements between. The homeowners of the properties and stuff.
Yes.
Just the back two properties.
What they're, what they're describing is that just the back two properties would utilize that driveway.
Okay, so the back.
Be a, a, they would each have a reciprocal easement.
Okay, so, so the back two. Properties would then have to have an agreement as far as maintenance and upkeep of the driveway. Okay. Now I'd like to ask about option D. Option D with the cul-de-sac type thing has provided. Uh, it looks like uh, to me is my recollection of the fire codes and such is that. This would probably make Chief Perringer pretty happy. He's got the room to turn things in that area. The access is much easier. This scenario is not a shared situation with the, with the property owners, correct? So this would be. Well, I guess a city-owned. Street or access, whatever we want to term it.
Yeah, I believe.
Yes.
Constructed to city standards.
Yes, it would be a city street.
Okay. Okay, um, you're obviously looking at the parking issue, which we're all concerned about and the traffic issue in that area, and that's great. These two options are a long ways from where we were beginning and uh. My personal. Preference, and I'm sh- yeah, I'm pretty sure I would speak for the majority of the folks in the neighborhood, would be option D. It's more palatable in uh. As far as appearance, I believe, and as far as access is for sure for the fire department. And one thing that's been a craw on my throat since the beginning is the share act, shared access is in the potential. Conflicts that property owners may have in the future. So. That being said. Thank you for looking hard at this and taking the extra step. And I'd also like to thank the developer for. His efforts in this. I think we're all going in the right direction now and hopefully. I don't think any of us will be a hundred percent happy with anything, but I think we're all getting to the point where. We can be pretty happy with something that we're going to arrive at here pretty quick.
I agree, I'm, I'm glad.
I think, I think we're, I think we're very close. Thank you.
Do you have anybody else in the audience that's wishing to speak in opposition of our application? Or that would like the mutual testimony, not in favor or against. Being heard. Not sure if there's any rebuttal required. That um. Part of bringing our applicant back up.
Think you can give the applicant the option.
Would you guys like to come up and address any of the concerns from that testimony at all?
Not so much concerns as it was um.
Well, yeah.
Choice, choice in appearance, one over the other.
And for the record, I'll have to have you state your name and address again.
Yeah. Savely Coligan, Woodburn, Oregon.
Corby, boat rights, Salem.
So the option D, as much as it's a more of a peeling look and uh, it might be better for the fire, firefighters, but. In the end, um. The way that the grade is, if, if, if there was a lot flatter and if the way that the grade is right now, it's just not doable. And we're just going to be cutting way too much dirt and just disturbing the soil more than it used to be. And especially the soil being the soil, soil that it is right now, as far as I know, it's what? Clay out there right now? Lot of clay, so um. Us, to my knowledge, if we go any deeper than that, we might be running into some other issues, so. I've, in, in my past experience, in my past knowledge, I'd rather not disturb the soil as much as it is right now and keep everything native. And uh, and if it was a lot flatter, maybe the cul-de-sac would have been a better option, but as far as, as far as. Addressing the, addressing the width of the shared access driveway and how much room the uh, emergency services can go through. And how, you know, how wa- how long the driveway is and where the house might be placed, we are within st- you know, codes and standards and. Uh, what is it? Hundred and fifty feet for a fire truck to go through? And that's why I mentioned earlier, I'd rather prefer having the dri- dri- uh, shared parking on one side only. Just to have more room for fire trucks. And I'm pretty sure whoever buys. These uh, houses down the road, who knows, it might be the neighbors, you know, uh, on, on the subdivision over, they might buy these houses over here. They, they, and I'm pretty, I feel pretty confident in uh, Sweet Home City, um. Sweet Home citizens or residents? Yeah, that's a better word, residents. If they see no, no posted parking, I'm pretty sure that people are going to work around and they're going to pu- put more parking on their own land. That's what I would do, if it was me, since it's going to be mainly flat at the front lots. So.
So real quick while we have you up here, if I can ask, Joe, do we have any rules or regulations on slope of a road? If it were cul-de-sac, I mean, it doesn't necessarily need to be flat.
No, it doesn't. Our maximum street slope is twelve percent. These look to be eight to ten percent.
About a hundred percent thirty.
Yeah.
Yes, but that'll be on the, on the property itself, yeah.
Yeah, it just, it's a matter of how much we're willing to dig out and I'd rather. Try to.
Understandable.
Do less as mu- less digging as possible. And then when it comes to the back corner lots, then we can actually fit the house to the land. Versus digging more and just creating more problems on the road. So that's what I've always done, especially on hillside lots. Um, I have a great example in Silverton, you guys can look it up on Hawk Drive, uh, eight one four Hawk Drive, Silverton. I actually built the house on steps on the actual, on the hillside, so you'll see the garage on the bottom. And uh, there's a first, there's a main level with the ma- master and then there's a top level that goes actually deeper into the hillside, but it's stepped. All the way through and I have retaining walls to pull up the hillside, so. That's a, that's one, that's a good example, but that one is extreme lock. That was basically a cliffside lock almost, so that was. Corby knows, he did the uh, um, do you on that one, I think? So.
And, and just to clarify really quick, the handout that we had been given shows a cul-de-sac radius, uh, diameter of ninety six feet, which is a forty eight foot radius. And on uh, option D, the radius shown is fifty one feet. So the cul-de-sac shown is bigger than it need. I do feel you're paying, though, in placing the house.
So I think um, if we go with option C, it'll be, it'll make my job a lot easier. Placing the house more comfortable on the hillside and also dealing with less road and uh, paving more road and. Digging more dirt than we need to. And we're already, we're already doing as much as we can, but I'm not trying to do this. I'm not trying to do the minimum, but I'm trying to do the minimum, minimum, so it doesn't affect the actual houses, so.
We do appreciate the effort you've been through this. Something to throw out so I can cause more problems. A possibility with option C and maybe grow a radius on the front. I know that's going to kind of go back into our parking, but it's worth limiting parking on the south side of foothills. To, to no parking and doing one, parking on just the north side of foothills. If there was a radius on those shared driveways, does that still fall into the?
Like what kind of radius are you thinking?
That's what I'm wondering. I'm, I'm, I guess I'm, two question for staff, would it be required to be the twenty six foot?
So I don't think a radius would change the required width of the, of the shared access.
I'm just wondering if, if they put a radius on it, I'm thinking from an, from a, a, a curb side, curb appeal. Standpoint, if it was to be radius, would that have to fall into meeting the radius required? In option, well, to the fire standard of twenty six feet.
It, my understanding is that there is no required radius from the fire district for this type of uh, of layout.
Okay.
Um, keep in mind also that that essentially is a fifty foot wide access. Because you got twenty five feet on both sides, but you're only having a driveway taking up twenty feet.
Right, it's much smaller than.
Right, and so you've got a lot of room on either side and, and which leaves the, the developer plenty of room to play around with at the, at the end of it. To soften that curve and, and make it easier for, for drivers to get in there. So I'm, I'm not sure that we would really. The, the fire district doesn't require it, I don't know. There's not really a city standard that would affect it.
Correct.
Chew on.
Jeff, can you, this is a subdivision in Lebanon on West Jetham.
Oh, yeah, I've been by that one.
Very nice subdivision.
Yeah.
Popular, high dollar values in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
And those are black lots.
Right, well placed, we don't like the black lot.
Oh, I mean.
Well placed, maybe.
Well, well placed. Nice here for them.
Do any other commissioners have any questions for applicant, regards to your information? All right, thank you so much. We appreciate all of your time and effort you've ever put into it.
Of course.
All right, so at this time, we'll close the public hearing for discussion among the commission at 7:41. Question, like, dislikes? Concerns?
You know, I've lived on a couple of different types of roads with double parking on both sides and single parking. And I preferred the single parking only because I felt the view was better when you're pulling out of your driveway, because sometimes you couldn't, there were so many cars parked on both didn't know that car from a distance that was actually parking or that was coming toward you. And the neighbors that I lived with on both sides, they said the same thing. Basically, they like single parking, but double parking on both sides because of safety matters and kids playing in between cars and stuff like that. That's, you know, my choice.
So, I'll say that visually and maybe neighborly wise, I like option D better. Except I understand what the developer is talking about related to a lot of preparation, lot preparation for lots 20 and 19 because of the grade. Practically, it makes sense to have option C because of that condition of the subdivision.
I like option D only probably to make it easy probably for the city for code enforcement. You know, with the C with the joint driveway or shared driveway, then you've, you've you've got to summons two parties if there's something with the driveway. You know, it's not just one, it's a shared one, so both are involved. Where D, you know who's involved in, in that part when it comes to the city problem.
Yeah, from a code enforcement perspective, they're, they're going to be posted no parking, is my understanding. And so that will be clear, and usually with no parking areas, we it goes to the owner of the vehicle. When it comes to any maintenance of landscaping in that area, while it's an easement, there is an actual owner of the property, and that's the houses on that side. And so, when it comes to enforcement, we would go against that owner of the property regardless of who has an easement on to it. So, I get what you're saying, and I'm not sure that, basically from staff's perspective, it's not a significant issue for us.
Yeah, I think one thing to remember too is, I mean, it's, it shows and is drawn as a 50 foot, 25 foot easement on the side, but the access to the firebox not 50 foot, 25, 25.
You ready?
I am fine.
No, I don't matter. You're ready for a motion. I'm going to go for it. There.
Versus thinking, I definitely do, do not want to see. Do you want the fronts and towers on? I'm going to probably say something that the so-called beauty strip is not beautiful. 90% of the time, you go around Sweet Home, they're full of rocks, weeds. They're, they're not kept up. When there is where the street has been widened and sidewalk is right up against the curb, where you can gain space. It generally looks a lot better than the so-called beauty strips. People don't take care of them. Thirdly, I would not be in favor of having our paving go in a little ways and having gravel. If that was a choice, I would prefer probably A, just because it would become all the same, though. I'm good with C, Martin, E1. But I think it ought to be A, we have to expect some depending to the law. And fourthly, I love conditions. I'm very much in favor, almost all of its streets be dedicated to the city, the city then, except for its policy. Just to avoid the conflicts that they mentioned that come up and you're guaranteed to come up. You're going to take care of this, but it's not on either, it's not made, it doesn't happen. I definitely lean in favor of city-owned streets, if possible. If it's something like in February, sidewalks could be against the curb. City shown in streets. Beauty strips are not really scripts. It could be either C or.
So, I've, I've seen where option C looks. There's been some examples in neighborhood communities where it's worked very well and done very tastefully. And I would be in favor of option C.
So, Commissioner Wolfius, just to answer your, your desire to the city-owned streets, I share that opinion. With option C, those driveways, we cannot take them on. They don't fit the standard. So, there's, it's not possible for us to, to do so.
Pretty rock and hard, but if that's the situation from, from C, they're telling us that it really can't work with what it can be.
Yeah, I guess the one thing about option C that would kind of, if you think about it, you've got your 20 foot hard surface from foothills going back. And you're also going to have, I believe, the minimum 20 foot hard surface from the garage door on the back house or foothills, but you're going to have 40 feet of it, while not so 40 feet. The house will sit back, it's in the lot. But there will be just a portion of the street between the two that will be actually gravel, hopefully at least a single layer asphalt or something dependent upon the building. There's hard surface on each end.
Can we make that a requirement? Are we allowed to do that? On the shared driving, the paving all the way?
Well, I would think as a condition of the approval necessary to substantiate and enforce or improve our, one of our city codes, the Hard Surface Approach Code, the I don't know about the aesthetic impacts of it, but I think that, I think the commission would have would have jurisdiction to make conditions of approval across the width and breadth of any development, any subdivision, and this is just one element. So, I, I think it's conditionable.
No, I mean, you could, you could require I believe that the condition of approval. Right.
They probably would be doing a volunteer anyway.
And I, and I could be wrong, but my, my opinion is that those would sell better if they were paved the whole way.
They would.
So, we have a possible condition of approval with hard surface from the edge of foothills drive to the garage door of the back. Back lot, back lot house placement. And we thought our permission of approval possibly parking on one side of the hill. So, we found a ground that we thought the south side grabbing to the side for parking, south side for the
I think, I like it paved all the way back only because I feel for the people that are in the very back of the houses. I would think they would get a lot of dust off of that gravel then.
Yeah, I'm, I'm worried about migration of rock onto foothills itself and then migrating into our storm.
I just did a quick count, no matter what, you got nine driveways on each side.
So, I just want to clarify, you're looking at three condition, additional conditions of approval. So, one I have where the sidewalk encourages on a property, there would be a minimum of a 25 foot garage setback from the property line. That was one.
That was only necessary if you were going to have parking on both sides. I think we, I think we're, yeah, I think we dropped that.
So, that one's dropped. Okay. And then the hard surface approach from foothills drive to the garage and then parking on one side of the foothills drive. I just wanted to make sure, I wasn't sure if we still had that.
So, I thought we had talked about designating the north side as the parking side and the south side as the no parking.
I, I, I think that works, I got it. Like, like Henry was saying, I mean, let's just throw the ball back at Joe. But from a city standpoint, from a city standpoint, what side of the street would the city engineer think parking and no parking? I'll say from a construction contractor standpoint, I would say parking on the north, no parking on the south. But I'm not quite that.
Well, the parking on the south side has that extra 150 feet over at the west end of the property. I don't know. I was actually hoping to avoid making that decision. Yeah, an opinion. Oh, yeah. Absolutely right. I was hoping to avoid making that opinion on that. I suspect that it would probably be better on the south side. Well, yes, put it on the north side. There's, there's more driveways on the north side. Well, like you say, there's nine each.
I guess, I guess I'm, I'm looking at it from this point.
The spacing is more consistent. Yeah.
Swinging fast on the foothills.
Yeah.
Probably better that the cars would be on its left instead of its right and then it'd round.
Yeah. Yeah. It's also the shorter it's also the, the shorter curb line. That's why I was thinking of is on the, the south side. Same number of driveways. There's more gap space center to center more or less if there are center driveways on the north side, so there might be a little more curb line.
On the other hand, the south side, you've got that stretch of foothills right next to 23rd that isn't in front of a house.
Yeah.
And so there'd be no driveways in that portion.
Well, even then.
Yeah.
Even then.
Yeah. So, I mean, you may gain a little bit more on-street parking if it was all on the south side. Even, but I don't know. I, I think it's kind of sixes. I don't, I don't see it. Good option. On the other hand, it's also something that's relatively easy to switch later. You just move sign over to the other side.
Yeah. It, it very That's right. You, you could condition your condition to have that by giving a 12 month period or a six month period just to see how well it works out.
Or basically just say parking on one side, whichever side yields the most parking spaces.
Yeah.
Or about to the discretion.
That's an option too.
It would still be required, but leave it up to indiscretion.
Okay, so tell me exactly what you want me to know. Because there's a whole lot in there.
This this, Mr. Chairman, I would say also that the city and the emergency services chief personnel of the fire district as well as city police would have some input on the final decision point as well. So, the, the, the developer as well as the city would coordinate on which side to eventually have it.
So, determined by the developer and coordinated with the city staff.
Coordination with city staff.
So, initially I didn't really like leaving it open like either or, but I'm okay with coordination between the city staff and developer.
How sacred is the city ordinance that we have in the beauty strip?
That could be for a different.
That is definitely a different conversation, a good one for the code update as we work our way through that, but it is. Well,
In some areas
In chapter.
Even though it may not be beautiful, having additional separation between a pedestrian and the street is a good thing.
Yes.
Which I, I think is yeah, but I can understand the, the lack of upkeep and the frustration.
Yeah.
Yes.
And also keep people, keep kids from playing in next to the street.
Falling off the sidewalk and into the street.
And I think that really is an issue for the code update and not to make an exception in this situation.
Yes, yeah, because a, a number of cities would designate what should happen and what would happen, and it'd be a condition of approval that such and such a format would be placed in that planter strip, beauty strip.
Let's be mindful, while we're seeing ones on the sidewalk.
Yes, but a different environment though. Yes.
Yes, you need to choose which option and then add the conditions.
I'll take a crack at a motion. If Angela will help me with the condition.
Well, I can't exactly remember what we did with the one, but yes, I can.
So, I would move to approve application SD 21-01, option C, including the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report with the following additional conditions, which are
The parking on one side of foothills determined by the developer in coordination with city staff and the fire district. And then the other one, the developer shall pave the easements from foothills drive to the garage.
As noted. Adopting the findings of fact listed in section three of the staff report, the setting of a 12 day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision and hereby direct staff to prepare in order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Yes.
I second.
Do you have a motion in a second?
Okay. Mr. Lumen?
Yes.
Mr. Journey?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Wolfius?
Yeah.
Commissioner Melcher?
Yes.
A motion passes. Motion passes five and two absent.
Thank you so much to everyone in regards to this, all the work that everyone's put in, the concerns. We do really appreciate your time and effort.
I need to. That's one a little bit.
Right, with our applications off the table. We have any other staff?
Um. Go ahead.
Well, I'm finally down from fifteen applications to two partitions. Most of them are in appeal period right now, so luckily. But I'm also starting work on Harvest Festival, so but we are very busy. We have our new building permit tech who's doing great. He's learning by fire. So but he's doing a really good job and he's diving in and learning the system and. I think he's gonna be a great addition to our team, so that some of that work is finally getting off my shoulders and. I'm getting back in back into planning mode, so. No, I don't want him leaving.
Oh, Adam Leisinger is his name. Come in and say hi if you're in the neighborhood. He'll be an imposing presence at the counter because he's six six. With a beard that's almost that big too, so.
Really, really.
In charge of planning different festivals because I recently had a couple of neighbors ask about like, you know. They moved into Sweet Home several years ago and they said they've come from town that did like a Fourth of July festival parade. And they blew up the fireworks where the residents of that community could actually watch. You know, the fireworks should be far away, you know, for safety purpose, but they're right there on the property that they can see.
So it depends on the event. So Chamber of Commerce puts on a lot like the fireworks and the we don't do Fourth of July here. We do Sportsman's Holiday. So that is Chamber of Commerce. Movies in the Park, Sweetheart Run and the Harvest Festival, I do those. And then there's other groups that might do smaller festivals in here, but it's mostly it's either. Majority of them are between the Chamber of Commerce and us, so it just kind of depends on the event and the time of year. Yeah, the jamboree is its own entity and then there's a there was a holiday parade and so and I think that's gonna be built back up and that's also a chamber. Chamber does that also.
But we also have a special events permit process that includes both public space and parks and and those amenities. But also includes a way for people to block off streets and so forth and get that cooperation. So if there was an organization. Or a person that wanted to put on something, there is a method to do that. Now, depending on what they want to do, there may be an incredible expense to it. Because when you're talking about blocking off streets and all the equipment that's necessary for that and the police presence and so forth. There is there is a cost to that, but that process, any any organization that wants to put on some big event, there's a way for them to do it. Provided they're prepared for the consequence.
Like, you know, I moved from Florida. Every year we'd block off our street. We had twenty or thirty houses on that street, but the city would come and put those.
Yeah, block party.
Yeah, we'd have a block party. Everybody would put tables out front and we'd all walk down to each of the neighbors and, you know, and have a drink or sample food and all that. And the city would provide us the block off wood or whatever it is to block both sides of.
And and that same permit process can do that too. Well, there's charges for that. For a block party, it's not the cost isn't. It depends on your block. I mean, if you if you live on Long Street, it's not gonna happen.
Well, yeah.
Um, but if you but for some of the residential neighborhoods, as long as there's a way around, you're you're talking about first, you're not really gonna need a police presence. And second, it's just a matter of the barricades and.
Well, yes and no, but it has to be. So we just recently had a block party that submitted and. It can sometimes be a little timely, so sometimes you have to put it in, but. The fire department, police department, public works and us all have to review the application because there's if you block off a street. That you're blocking off access for fire and ambulance services and so everything's got to be reviewed. There has to be a plan. So it's not just a matter of so what you're paying for is the rental of the the barricades. And then our time to have to review it and and it's. It's a minimal cost for it, but there is some review based on more for safety standards than anything else.
We haven't had that many applicants for that kind of thing. I I'd like to make it easier. But there is, I mean, there is some basic costs to staff and to the city to handle it, so.
Do you send out like letters to everybody that be on that street to to get their approval in case you had half of them sale? No, 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 we don't want the road blocked off because I kind of go off the road.
We we require the applicant to get letters and and signatures to bring to us and and part of that is part of our review process that we. And it depends on the situation of the of the application. We have a lot of weddings. We have baby showers. That's a lot of what I get is weddings in the parks and that's one thing and we have refundable deposits depending on if you're gonna use the bridge and so there's. Typically, there's staff. I have to go out on a Saturday and put up reservation signs. Our public works staff has to go out, so that's the reasons for the. Because sometimes it's on a weekend that we have to do the same stuff.
Over time to get that.
Yeah, so it it all depends on the situation and the event, but there is avenues for people to do events outside of the ones that the chamber and the city do.
Other than that, we're. Still moving forward with everything. Just seems like there's a lot going on.
Just the one.
Yes.
Urgent care, just the one. Possibly another facility of some kind. I don't know what I'm able to say. Okay, medical office. Haven't had one of those yet.
Not in a while.
Uh, one thing to keep in mind in the near future, just just by way of information, ODOT is is working on. A repair of the sunken grade on highway twenty at mile post fifty five and fifty six. That's obviously not not quite close to city limits, but it's it impacts all of us if you're traveling that direction. So keep your eyes out. There will be some public notices going out, but it's gonna involve. In August and September, going down to a single lane with a flagger to let people through, so there'll be some delays. And I think there for a few days it'll be closed entirely in September. And then next May, there's gonna be, I think, a two week closure. For for highway twenty in that that portion, so. Right, it'll.
That's something that they would. Warrant putting every year board out, stay out.
Yeah, they're. Right, we're we've the GR communication specialist has been attending the the webinars they've been having and and the. The issues involved in in making sure we have all the information, so we'll be. Getting that out to as many people as we can, but just it'll impact your plans for traveling. I think I'm they're gonna try and avoid the the major holidays, but.
Just a bit of nerdy information. A geologist told me one time when I worked for the Forest Service that it can move up to two feet a year in that area. Which is why it has to be redone almost every year.
Well, not only they're redoing it, but they're putting in they're putting in like additional retaining walls and structures to try to slow down that that. Why? So. If you ever wonder why highway twenty isn't a bigger road, that's why. Other than that, I don't. Do we have anything else going on?
Movies in the park tomorrow night. Crude stew.
Yes, caveman kind of thing.
Do the. I think it is the fire department and the elves doing the references during the jamboree weekend. Do they require?
Um, now, if it's the jamboree has the their approved special event. It's all been approved and so they have. Areas that are designated for vendors and such that they have control over, and so if it's on that property, then you wouldn't need any. Permit. And and our special event permit doesn't necessarily apply to. Like a like if you're if you own a store and you're having a special thing to, you know, meal or whatever that you. It's not really doesn't really fit within the criteria.
It's it's more for.
Public right of way. So like any of our parks, if you're closing down a street, you're closing a public right of way. So it has a lot more to do with, you know, like any of the parades, we have to shut off the roads and we have to do different things for the parades and so that's why it has to come to us.
If it requires public facilities or public personnel. Or city personnel, you know, safety personnel and that kind of thing, then it's gonna rise to that level.
Darn, I was looking forward to it.
Just remember, we do have to get back into it at some point. Wait, we can't stop the applicants from coming. We're required to review their applications.
So we'll go ahead and during the meeting, planning permission five fifteen.
Thank you.
So can I close down First Avenue for a festival? It's a festival.
You can apply. Doesn't mean it's gonna be granted.